We'll call the 50s here. She's having technical difficulties. Kristi?
Yeah.
Robbie?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. All right. Go to business. 2.1. Okay. We have it all listed in one here. So I entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the January 26, 2022, and February 9, 2022 Board of Directors meeting.
Don't move.
Second. Move is seconded. I believe we all on the board got copies. Or it could have been for anybody in the public who wanted to look at them. Anybody? Any objections? Seeing none. Call for the vote. Vicki?
Yes.
Yep. Kristi?
Yes.
Robbie?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you all. So before I open the floor to public comment, I would like to make a request to those in attendance, either in person or online. Hopefully, you've all either watched or viewed the recording meeting of the collaborative planning team, the CPT, held last week, or have you read the minutes and seen the recommendation? Couple of years, the board has followed the recommendations of the CPT. With 19. While I make no promise that the board will again follow recommendations of the CPT, I expect that will be the case. So my plan tonight is to allow public comment on whatever motion may be made and discussed by the board under 6.1, following the board's discussion. But prior to its vote, should anyone feel the need to speak at that time? As such, I'm asking that under this public comment period, comments be directed at other issues. Let me be clear. I'm not trying to limit comments on making or masking or other COVID measures, but rather direct them to a more appropriate time. Should those in attendance rather to speak under public comments on the COVID measures? That is allowed. But then opening up discussions after the motion may not be necessary. So we could save a lot of time if comments are held until all know what the board is planning based upon the motion on the floor and how board members react to the motion. To just try and move us along and not have a lot of duplication. All right? So with that being said, I'll open it up to public comments. Please remember the guidance that we have out there. Be respectful. You know, you can say good things and bad things about people, but can be more general and not necessarily call people out individually. That's kind of preferred. And at this time, I'll open it up to the floor here and then online, people can raise their hand. And that's the little icon that's down under participants. It says, raise hand. And that'll pop up, and then the superintendent can call it in case we have multiple people, and we can keep it orderly. So at this time, anybody, please, if you, if you speak, please give us your name and the town that you're a resident of. So those on the board who represent you particularly will know who's speaking. I don't know the names of everybody in Wales, because we're the smallest town. So I wouldn't expect the other board members to know the names of everybody in their towns. So that being said, also send a message. The superintendent will get it, and he can read it. I do have one.
You have one?
Yep.
Okay. Laura, can everybody here make sure everybody can hear you? Mike's over here.
Yeah.
I've got one too. Okay. So Laura Clifford asks, is there going to be any discussion on the busing? Staff taking buses home, et cetera, with the increase in gas, the additional person retiring? Well, we're, we are busing all the time. We do have someone retiring at the end of the month, but we have that covered currently. We do have two people in the class right now. Is that correct, Jen?
Yep.
And my plan is, once they're done, to bring them in to talk about potential, potentially working here. So our busing looks pretty good right at the moment.
Okay. So let me remind you, everybody, this is public comment. We usually don't get back and forth and answer questions. All right? You make your comment. If you have something that we need to discuss, we can get it on to the next agenda. Hopefully. So, you know, it's, it is really an opportunity for you to make comments. And not for...
Yeah. So this is Laura. So I'm from Sabato. So I would be happy to make, make the comment. I have emailed before and nothing's made it to the agenda either, and, you know, readily given up on things. But I just would encourage, as I stood here in December, I encouraged kind of discussion around the busing situation. And superintendent was confused with that. And then December, we were shut down for a period of weeks. So, I mean, I did look at the agenda and I saw that ahead of time that there was another person retiring. And understand that there's people in class ready to be hired eventually, which is fantastic. At the same time, there's the concern of the delay and what that looks like from a parent's perspective. And then it's also concerning, you know, with the increase of fuel costs and what that, that looks like in the budget. And, you know, I followed a bus the other day from Sabato to Litchfield, and it was parked in somebody's driveway. So it's just, is that really a use of public funds? Is that an efficient use of public funds, et cetera? So I'm happy to follow up with an email later, though. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any other comments, please? Any other comments? Seeing none and hearing none? We'll move on to petitions and communications. I do not have any of these either. I have received none either. On the reports, 5.1 Superintendent's report.
Most of my report will be later when we go through the draft budget. You know, things have been pretty busy, as you all know. We've got a lot going on. We've completed the lighting project, and it's, it's gone really well. We actually saw a reduction in all of our power bills in buildings that we, that we put the lighting in. So, you know, I think that was a win, given what we're all seeing for our power bills at home. There is an increase in the cost of fuel, but we are locked in with our fuel costs right now. So that we're actually currently not feeling that, that pinch at the moment. Our diesel costs are locked in, as is our heating fuel costs. Obviously, that changes in the future when we set new rates. But, you know, currently, we're paying $1.96 a gallon for heating fuel. So I feel pretty lucky about that.
Can we have some?
It, it, it's interesting. Our fuel consumptions, we had a pretty cold January. All of a sudden, our fuel consumption's way up. We monitor that. But we, we, we buy roughly between diesel, between the diesel, K1, oil, propane. We're, we're well over 120,000 gallons together. So, you know, looking at other options, looking at how we can get creative. We worked with the towns to buy diesel fuel and some heating fuel. So it, it, it works out pretty well. But I, again, those costs are way through the roof. Other than that, if you see appointments, Heather Thomas, a custodian at Libby Tozer School, Matthew Bergy, halftime custodian, and then two, two appointments. So I'd like to welcome Jessica Cologne. She's going to be the new business manager here. Jessica's worked for us for a long time. She's done payroll in RSU4 for a long time. She stepped in. She was interim. She's done fabulous job. I mean, it just really, you know, being a business manager and managing, you know, we have a nearly a $20 million budget with a bunch of federal grant funds. She stepped right in. Federal grant invoicing is arguably one of the hardest things to do. It's very tricky. It's about, you know, the backup, the documentation, and the state just keeps asking for more and more. And she hasn't had an issue. You know, that, that's huge. Our cash flow's great. We're just, she really has done a fantastic job and was a quick study. So I'm, I'm happy to have her on board, and we welcome her to that role full-time. And then after that, I'd like to welcome John Barney. John is here in the audience. If you want to say hi. John, John is going to be our new Director of Operations. So he will oversee maintenance, custodial, and transportation. We're really excited to have John. I know a board member was on board, and we welcome her to that role full-time. John comes to us with quite a bit of experience, you know, part of the National, the Army, correct, John?
Correct.
Yep. And, and is a licensed boiler technician. I'm just really excited. He's got a great personality, a lot of knowledge. I'm going to be spending a lot of time with him the next couple of weeks. He and I are going to get to know each other pretty well, as I've been doing facilities and transportation. I'm, I'm excited. I really am. So I would welcome John, and certainly if you have questions, don't, don't hesitate to reach out. Okay. Then we do have a resignation, Guy Justjardins, a bus driver, and two retirements, Heather Thornton, head tech free librarian, and then Dave Mulcahy. You know, I, I think some of you know, Mr., know Dave. Dave's worked here a long time. I don't even know how long. When, when I first moved to Central Office and was touring buildings, Dave was one of the first people to come up and greet me at Oak Hill Middle School. Dave and I share a love for Hillman's Bakery in Fairfield. And so that's been something we've talked about many times. Dave, Dave has given a lot to this profession and to our students. And while we'll be sad to see him go, we wish him well in retirement. He certainly earned that. So. That concludes my report.
Any questions for the superintendent? Okay. We don't have any other reports tonight. This is not our report night. We have no other report. 6.1. Discussion and possible action regarding recommendations from the Board Advisory Committee, CPT meeting of March 2, 2022. So Mrs. Martin wants to, I think you're the spokesperson for the CPT. If you'd like to give us an overview. Hopefully, everybody went out and either watched the meeting or read the minutes and stuff.
Yeah. So everything that we're going to speak tonight is posted on the CPT section of our website. The CPT event in January, and as everyone's seen in the news, there's been a lot of changes in regards to what the governor, as well as Dr. Shaw and the CDC, has done for updates. We anticipated an updated SOP, which got changed yesterday. So we had a CPT last week in anticipation of that change. The CPT focused mainly on the change of universal masking and is asking the board to consider option two, which is making masking optional. There is some exceptions to that piece. One is if we do end up in outbreak status, the CDC will require us an outbreak status. It looks very different than they did at the very beginning of the year. So in the beginning of the year, it was three or more cases. And it currently is now following other communicable diseases. So 15% of active cases. So every morning, we run a report to find out if we have 15% of our students or 15% of our staff that are out due to COVID. So there was a conversation about that. If we were in outbreak status, we would inform all of the community members. In addition, a part of the SOP and the guidance of CDC that has not changed, that when they shortened quarantine, students that met the criteria could shorten quarantine and do five days and then return to school on day six. One of the requirements that is still part of the SOP is if you are a positive case and are shortening your quarantine, you must wear a mask on day six, seven, eight, nine, and 10, and then can go unmasked on the 11. And that's part of that, still having the virus in your system. The recommendations include also if you are sick, to stay home. And there was a lot of conversation regarding how the choice of parents that want to continue to wear masks. That is a family choice and a choice that a family and a child should maintain. But it's not something that we'll be policing masks or not mask. Similar to we're not policing day six through 10. It's just not our capability in our schools to be able to do that. So we are recommending making masking optional and just being mindful about outbreak status as well as if you are a positive.
All right. Thank you. Does the board have any questions of Kathy on the report? Diane?
Kathy, is that 15% of the staff together or staff and students separately?
It's four. So it could be 15% of staff or 15% of students or 15% of staff and students.
Okay. Kathy, is that by school?
By school.
Okay.
And not just, just because we get to the 15% does not automatically automatically constitute outbreak status. We can take open investigation, and we meet with the CDC, and then they determine if we're in outbreak status. So it just kind of flags us. We start flagging at 10% and start really making some serious phone calls to parents and to staff members to see if they're really actively sick. And that's why we encourage parents that when your child is out, to make sure that you call the school. Because having an absence unexcused actually counts as actively sick, which puts into that 10, 10 to 15%. So we encourage if you're sick or absent, please call and just let us know. An excused absence does not constitute or part of that outbreak status. So that is helpful for us.
Other questions?
Kathy, I don't know if this is the appropriate spot for this, but I know that the federal masking for transportation is due to expire on the 18th. And I've heard from some other people in other districts who have made masking optional that their students are not required to be wearing masks on the bus. And I know that that was a point of conversation at some point. However, is that, is that something that is going to be actively enforced for eight days? Or is that something that if the board decides tonight that masking is optional, are we also going to go with being optional on classes?
So the TSA originally had their extension to March 18th during February vacation. They canceled that extension. It would automatically denballen void to reduce the requirement for masking on busing. So currently, there is no requirement for that. Any date of March 18th does not exist at this point in time.
Okay. Thank you.
Welcome.
Other questions?
Just last point of clarification. Can we talk a little bit about school masking?
Yeah. Yep. So in the packet, I showed how many pool participants we had per building per week. I also showed what the average percentage of pool participants were in, in the building. We do pool testing on Mondays and Tuesdays. We do it in Sabato and Litchfield on Mondays, and we do Oak Hill High School on Tuesdays. We've been getting results on Wednesdays, if not Thursdays. Parents can sign up on the website if they would so choose. It is a free PCR test that we do weekly. I also showed the percentage of the number of individuals that were positive in that 90-day window. So people can see how many pool participants we have in each building, as well as how many students that are in that 90-day window. You can see how many individuals. The CPT recommended that we continue pool testing if we choose to go unmasked for the next round till the next CPT, and then we'll revisit that. We average about 11%, 11, 12% per building.
Any other questions? All right. So I would like to place on the floor a motion that reads, I move that effective immediately, RSU4 moves to universal masking to mask optional for all using RSU4 grounds, buildings, or transportation. Furthermore, the RSU number four, S Y School Year 2021, 2022, updated plan, which is number four school student plan for school exposure and RSU number four school staff for school exposure. Be modified, replace, replace the universal masking and replace it with a section titled masking optional, which will contain language developed by the administration laying out the masking guidelines, ensuring that it contains language that reinforces the ability for each individual to freely exercise their right to mask or not. So that's my motion. If I could have a second?
Second.
The discussion on the motion. First by the board, then we'll open it up. So spend some time trying to calculate what the recommendation was from the CPT to try and get it all in. So we don't, we're not trying to piecemeal it with different things. I ran it by Kathy. She believes that it did in fact capture intent of the recommendations from the CPT. We have been following the recommendations for a couple of years, along with CDC's, and this is their recommendation. So I would ask for support board on this motion. But if somebody has comments, let, no, let them out, because this will be our new policy that we will live by until this time, then we have to go and change it for some reason. I would imagine pool testing will be the next one. My viewing of the CPT meeting was that they didn't really want to change two variables at once in case something happens. Wouldn't know, but pool testing has shown some. I picked up some, not many. Don't have a lot of participants. But that was kind of their goal, in, in my mind. I'll probably recommend that we stop pool testing, but that's, they're going to be their decision and their recommendation. So, your comments on the motion?
I guess my comment is, we, if this passes and we move to optional masking, we want to encourage parents to have conversations, because there will be kids that choose to continue the mask. There will be teachers that continue to mask. Having those conversations makes me know that it doesn't mask just like, and I know you're going to all do that, but it's really important to you, especially for our little kids. That might not be able to be vaccinated. Then let's choose to do that. So just be kind about those that continue to exercise their right to choose.
Other comments?
It's time. It's time.
There's no other comments that opened?
We're just, we're going to, we're going to go optional indefinitely until we decide we need to cross this boundary gap. What I'm hearing from you?
The plan is to make masks optional. There, with the old plan, there was never a deadline on when it was going to end. You know, it's possible that during, who knows? There, you know, there might be a reason that parents want their children to be masked going in, and, and maybe not. You know, maybe next year, I can't, maybe next year, the flu gets really bad, and some parents want their, have masks. That would be the parents' choice. So whether they want a mask or not, it will not be, right now, it's not the school boards. The only way it would be outside of the school is if we had 15% and they were COVID. They did their research. It found out 5% was COVID, 10% were the flu. You want to go into a cor- a mask requirement because of COVID. But they do the same thing with every other communicable disease. So if we had pertussis, you know, and it reaches a certain level, then they will come into the school and start an outbreak, and the CDC mandates certain requirements to be done. That's outside of our hands. No control on that. That's not our decision. We just support that we have certain then that wait for years. I'm new. I come into Yeah. This doesn't, this doesn't timeout. It can be open for modifications as we go along, which I expect pool testing will be. There may even, they may even go and modify the requirement through 10. If you've been sick with COVID. More of a requirement.
That is correct. It's part of it.
So, yeah. So it doesn't bring
Why don't, why don't get rid of pool testing now? Well, it's tying up staff. It costs money somewhere somehow. And it's just inevitable anyway. I see other districts that are
Go back to normal.
My thoughts are always like, no.
Please. The board is doing a discussion. I'll open it up. Want to make comments? Great time.
I guess maybe, let's, to clarify, the stuff that we have to utilize to implement this two days a week, what's the cost?
Yeah. Yeah.
Are you saying to pay for the one person or almost two come in and do school testing? If we have a positive case or in our cost there, do either pool testing as well as the we do as part of the funds or, or money required from our
We, we actually haven't spent any more.
Yeah, but if they ever open up the earmark, allow that we spend, we're just burning money at this point.
I mean, well taken.
I guess this occurs to me that because of how the body has gone through the disease, the most part, there's not, I don't, you have physical data, how, how many people have actually tested positive, and all of the nitpicking of it all. I'm just wondering how many people, because signing up for pool testing is optional for people as well, and how many people have actually opted out of it after potentially their child has gotten sick? Do you know what I mean?
Yeah. So we currently run about 11%
Right.
you know, participation. So it, you know, it's not anywhere near the 60, 70% that they were hoping for to be able to be a real tool.
Right.
It does allow for some very limited early detection.
Right.
So that hopefully that student or staff member can be isolated before they have a chance to pass it on.
Yeah.
Which may be, I think the CPT's thoughts were, once we go mask optional, that may be a little bit more critical. At least for, I don't know when next time CPT is going to meet. I imagine, next month?
Yeah, to discuss this.
So probably before, probably before our first meeting in April, they will have met and will have the recommendation at that time. So, I mean, that's
You can get COVID tests for free, and people can continue to do that at home if they so choose. I just
Correct. They could.
Yeah.
I also wonder too, by removing one layer of mitigation, families might decide that they want to actively participate in pool testing where they hadn't before, because they were comfortable, because everybody was masked in their classrooms. So it will be interesting to see if more families opt in in the next month. Also, I will say, it's quite cumbersome to actually try to sign up for pool testing. So that could be a barrier to some families.
And I think part of the discussion also, if I remember correctly, was that if we should stop pool testing, and we start seeing numbers go up, to start it back up again is like a four to six-week process.
Yeah.
In which case, you know, we miss a great opportunity to go and provide at least, what's now very limited. But for those that it works for, it's, it's worth it. So for everyone that we catch that we can keep passing on to somebody else, staff or another student, to that child and that child's parent, it's probably well worth it. For those who never come back positive, you know, because they just wonder what, you know, why they're doing.
When is the next CPT scheduled?
I haven't scheduled. I'm going to schedule it for the end of the month or right
This month?
Right. Either the end of this month or first week in the book. Before, before the first board meeting in the book.
I mean, that's, I mean, if that's going to be the deal breaker, I say, I'm fine with that. We just table it to them for the next CPT meeting.
The board have any other discussion on the motion? All right. So at this time, both online and here in the public, I will open this up as I had mentioned earlier. So you know, you kind of know what the motion, well, you do know what the motion is. It's been read. I think you probably have a sense of what the board is going to do, yea or nay. So with that information, if you feel that you still want to make some comments, I'm not trying to tell you not to, but, you know, you could probably see where this is going. If, but if you want to make a comment, please do. Goes online. If you can raise your hand or send a chat to the superintendent, who can either read it or so that we can get a response to it. But again, this is a public comment period. It's not a back and forth. All right? So at that time, following our regular rules for public comment, those who might want to make a brief comment, hopefully a brief comment, please feel free to do so. And that would be about the motion that's on the floor. The COVID masking. And that would be about the motion that's on the floor, the COVID masking.
I have one in the, in the chat.
Okay.
Um, so this is a Kerry Ricker teacher in which field resident. Just Judy Davidson, uh, in response to CPT recommendations about masking, wonder who will be responsible for monitoring any students who returns to school being a mask for a period of time after quarantine. Will all connect the staff, be aware of those students are and be responsible for ensuring that those students are masked. I, I think that's something we're gonna talk about at the administrative team meeting tomorrow.
I think Kathy already addressed it. We're not gonna be policing that. We just can't. We just can't do it. No.
And, and I'll, I'll be candid with it, you know, um, and these are my thoughts on it only. Um, you know, this is happening all the time. The people are going in public, going into Walmart. Um, we're walking around people who don't mask, they, you know, six through eleven. Um, and I get it, uh, but it, it would be almost impossible uh, to police that in our buildings. And furthermore, I'm not sure of the HIPAA and FERPA um, issues that may arise with, because of that. So, uh, we just can't. It's, it's almost impossible.
So really asking the parents and the students to either stay at home for the full ten days. Who want, you know, some students might want to miss ten days, but many want to get back after five. Or have them, ask them to respectfully mask just to think about the other students. Because whatever we think about it, I mean, that is a requirement. We're not going to be the mask police any longer. We never wanted to be. We were hoping that people would conform and get the guidance, but. Yeah, any other comments?
Uh, there's one more.
Okay, we got someone coming here too, but go ahead.
Uh, there's somebody with new masking optional policy. Let's also extend sports. Uh, yeah, I mean, it, that's an easy one for me. Yes, unless the MPA says something different. So it, it, you know, I, I, the MPA hasn't said anything, have they Jim? I think they're probably. They're not gonna touch it. Yes, we will extend.
Yes, sir. Hi, uh, my name is Bill DuBois. I live in Wales. Uh, I just want to say it's March ninth, two thousand twenty-two. COVID is over. Unless you're living under a rock, COVID is over, including these masks. So I understand, you know, when you said be kind for the children that are gonna wear the mask, if you guys voted for this. Which it should be unanimous. Anybody that votes against it, I mean, you should just, you're in a whole different level. But yes, we'll be kind. I wish you guys would have been kind to our kids for two years now, you know, and give them the option. So it's time to vote and get it over with now. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? See any?
No, there's nothing in the chat.
Alright, so if there's no other comments, then at this time, does the board have any final comments? We oftentimes do based upon comments that are made.
I have one question. How is this going to be communicated out?
So I will have something go up tonight. I do have anticipating, I sent something to up later tonight, uh, but I will put out an official letter tomorrow.
Alright.
Um, kind of just to reiterate the fact, yes, it's over. We need to move on. I appreciate Jennifer, you being honest about the transportation uh, uh, mask mandate or whatever that was. It's unfortunate that's tonight's the first night I'm hearing of that. As we've said, it expired, I believe. We should have been informed. Our children should have been able to unmask on the bus. Um, Christie, uh, I agree with you. We should be kind. Um, we should be kind to anybody. Regardless of what they do, how they look, what they wear, what they say. In addition to that, we should not ostracize, ostracize, ostracize children who choose not to wear a mask. And don't want to wear a mask. It needs to go both ways. Be kind, both sides. Pool testing should be gone. If we're only participating eleven percent, those co-invested, I agree with Scott, that can be earmarked for something else. Like my son's kindergarten classroom, we had to sign up for parent teacher conference requesting donations of tissues. Unacceptable. I was outraged to the point where I was shaking right now. I couldn't speak for months about this issue. I just sent my school, come to school with a mask because he loves it. And I didn't sign him up till the day before school because I didn't want to deal with this nonsense. It's over. Move on. COVID, believe what you want about it. Let our kids live. Let them breathe. Let them be normal. They're resilient, but they can, oh, they can have a basic breaking point. They need to thrive. Resilience is not what we strive for. Thriving is what we strive for. I stole that from somebody else on a Facebook group. But I'm not taking credit for it. I think I had something else to say, but I don't remember, but that's all. We need to move on.
Thank you for your comments. We are back out of the public comment period, back to the board. Any final comments to the board? Hearing them, then I'll call for the vote. Uh, Vicki?
Yes.
Uh, Christie?
Yeah.
Robbie?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Yes.
No, yeah. Yeah, Scott. Motion carries. Thank you. At this time, we are going to have. Presentation to approve the Oak Hill High School class trip. So I believe we have some students here along with a class advisor. Yeah, so the microphone so people can hear you speaking, alright. Yes, if you would, please introduce in which town you, you live in.
My name's Alexis Ben and I live in Wales. I'm Kendall Gervais. I live in Sabados.
Paige Gonya, Sabados. Kylie Hyde, Sabados.
Alright, so yours.
Okay, uh, you can switch to slide. Uh, next one. So we have four options. Um, the first one was JP Resort. It was in Vermont. Um, there's all kinds of activities and the estimated cost was three hundred dollars.
First jersey?
Yeah, first time.
Okay.
You can go to the next one. Our next option was Six Flags, the New England Water Park. Estimated cost of one hundred fifty dollars. The only thing about this is it was a four trip, a four hour trip both ways. So in the morning, you'd have to get up at six, say, um, not get there till ten, same night. So we wanted to have a better option. And you switch. So this one was the winner. Um, it's the Boston Dinner Dancing Cruise. So we leave on Friday. And then we'd go to Six Flags and the water park and that's three hundred thirty dollars per person. Um, yeah, that only makes a win. Uh, our last option was the whitewater rafting. Estimated cost of one hundred eighty dollars. Um, you got to choose to. Of course, this one, do we have any votes to it?
So this is the results of the class trip. Um, so. If you're looking at, forty students wanted to go on the uh, trip to Boston Dinner Dancing Cruise and Six Flags. So there's really, looking at this, there's no really other options. So this is gonna be the winner. But going with this, um, this means that not all of the students are gonna go. Um, typically you have like, some students will back out of it and it'll be a smaller number. Um, yeah.
Next slide. Okay, so our planned itinerary is, um, we would leave on Friday, May thirteenth at noon from the high school. Uh, we would check in in our hotel at around three thirty. Um, and our hotel is in Auburn, uh, Mass. We would swim and get ready for dinner, uh, head over to the Spirit of Boston Dinner Cruise at five. Um, or sorry, we would head over there for five and it would leave at seven. Um, the cruise would go from seven to nine thirty and we would return to the hotel after that. Um, Saturday morning, we would get up and have breakfast at the hotel by eight thirty, um, head to Six Flags for ten. Um, we'll be there for lunch and, um, you know, early afternoon. And then we'll leave at five, um, head for home. We'll be home by nine thirty after stopping for dinner, which will be fast food. So that's our hotel. Uh, so the hotel alone is ninety dollars per student. Um, see it's halfway between Boston and Six Flags. We chose that so we wouldn't be staying like remotely in one location over the other. So it would have lesser travel times from each place. Next slide. The bus is the most expensive part of this trip, um, in terms of per person, um, without, you know, being a place where we're spending a lot of actual valuable time. Um, so the bus rental is uh, three thousand three hundred and forty dollars, um, which is the tip, the hotel room for the driver and the bus parking at each place that we're going. So as you can see, this is um, a kind of a layout of each um, cost we have. So the hotel obviously includes the night stay. It includes the breakfast in the morning. It has a pool. Um, the bus is fifty to a hundred dollars per person, uh, but we do have some money in our class account to help offset that from class dues and things like that. Um, food will be twenty to, ten to twenty dollars per person and that's um, that fast food on the way back. Um, which I think also includes the dinner the night or possibly, but I'm not sure. And then the Six Flags cost is seventy dollars per person. That includes the water park, the rides and um, a lunch and unlimited drinks all day. And I think maybe a snack too, but I could be wrong. And then the Spirit of Boston Cruise is a hundred twenty dollars per person. So that totals around three hundred thirty, once we offset the cost of that bus.
So that's about the cost of that?
That is including the cost of the bus, like once we offset, so like that fifty to a hundred, we might be able to offset some of it. Any questions?
So I'm gonna jump to Bob's thunder because he always, he always is concerned as I would be. Um, if there are students who want to go who are not able to come up with the funds for this, what sort of accommodations have been made for them so that they can attend?
Yeah, you have to be right. This was that, this was a tough one just because usually we will, we would have fundraised for two years and so we kind of rent that for us. And so it's been super minimal. We did have one that was freshman year that was able to go to where it's at and we had done a bottle drive. Uh, but when they came up as eighth graders, um, they did come up with some money and so that's why we're trying to alleviate some of the costs. The bus is a killer. And so it's so much money and so really the price could go down. It just depends on how many kids want to go. Like, so if, you know, a lot go, the big bus is great, but if we have less, then hopefully we can take vans. That would be even lesser, which would be great. Um, so, um, I could throw in maybe one more fundraiser is all I would have time between now and May. And, you know, it's unfortunate, I, you know, I tried to be very clear with um, with the kids when we presented the different options. I posted on Facebook for parents. I said, please have this about money and reality and what's coming. I don't think we ever saw five dollars for Gavin coming our way. Maybe you did. I did not see that, but whatever. Um, and so we're just trying to offer the kids something, um, but yes, you're right. It's, it's unfortunate that it, it probably will not include everybody.
And not that it always does, but the other concern that I have is knowing how condensed um, spring sports schedule is. Like, that's something that Mr. Palmer's gonna have to be very concerned with. And knowing like for baseball and softball, sometimes with weather conditions, it means that you've got to double up with games and such. So I'm wondering if any of that was been taken into consideration in being on for two days as opposed to one.
Um, it has not yet, um, because we didn't, I wasn't sure what their option would be, would be. And so we have three basic weekends that we could choose. Um, that first one would be Friday and Saturday, the twelve, thirteen, thirteen, fourteen, thirteen, fourteen. The other one would be Memorial Weekend and then the last one is graduation weekend, which I, please do not make me do a graduation weekend. Which wants to do for graduations, it's gonna be epic by the way, but still. But if it's, if, if it's what it came down to, it's what it came down to. Obviously, once you have the list, I would try to work with you a little bit to try not to, you know, uh, penalize the kids, but we just, we do the best we can.
Right. Yeah, it would be cheaper if you did a school bus?
We can't do the bus because it's out of state.
I can't, so we are not insured to take buses out of state. However, as I sit here and think about this, I am willing to follow that.
Cause like, can't you get a fee for just the weekend?
Yeah, I, I don't know. That I don't know. I have to ask. So actually, just I met with the insurance company last week. That was something we talked about, went, was looking into it. So I would love to be able to send our buses out of state. That was a thing we used to do all the time. I mean, when I was a kid, our buses would go out of state. Uh, but right now, we're not insured to cross state lines with our buses. So, um, we talked about it with the insurance company there.
Is Hudson Bus allowed to do that?
What's that?
Is Hudson?
Hudson is, is a private contractor.
Right.
They're a private company, so they have different, right. They, they actually charter.
Could they do a charter or no?
It would be about the same.
Would be about the same?
Yeah.
Okay.
That is gonna have to be what the other bus companies, because it's typically, I hope a lot of out-of-state drivers are for age and they're always the highest.
Yeah, so like I definitely, I mean, there are ways to cut costs, but I need to give you worst case scenario. And so like, if you have a little bit of money in any town to offset something, um, you know, like we can find a cheaper hotel. Like, but this was, you know, based on the research that I could do before I make reservations and stuff. That's where we were at.
Well, and I think too, I think there's a way to get creative with some of this as well. And, and remember by policy, one of the reasons that they have to come ask is because they're asking to cross state line. So we actually have board policy that, that requires that. So had they been going to Carrot Tunk or somewhere like that, we would, we would have done that.
Yeah, well, easily come even for the whitewater rafting, which is a hundred percent amazing just because it becomes a school sponsored event. And provides, you know, the board's approval of, of the event. So now that you took care of that question.
Sorry.
Is how many students do we have in the senior class?
We have about a hundred.
So we're talking fifty percent, they would go to it, where probably fifty percent has decided they're even like going to go for one reason or.
Yeah, so I have, yeah, so I had about, I would say about forty kids who did not, even after countless begging, uh, uh, to try to answer just so I could get a better sense of where it, uh, from it. But they didn't want to answer the survey, so.
And, and I think too, gotta correct me if I've done these trips a lot in the past and we typically only get, I don't know, forty, fifty percent participation. Or in the tops, yeah.
Yeah, and that's one of the things that always worries me. For, you know, it should be the senior class. It's difficult to do, uh, because a lot of families just don't have the financial means. You know, underwrite the cost and some are working, so, and we're playing sports. A lot of activities going on, so that, everybody can go. So hopefully there'll be a nice graduation party, senior night there where everybody will have an opportunity to have a good time. Uh, with their, with their classmates and include almost all the students in that, so. Any other questions? So we would need a motion from the board to approve, and we have to mention the name, the trip. That we're approving, which would be, if we throw that slide up. Or it's not a state trip to, to Massachusetts.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's the Boston. Alright, Alexa Christie.
Okay, I make a motion to approve the senior class trip, which includes the Boston Dinner and Dancing Cruise on Friday. And the New England Water Park, um, often on Friday with an overnight stay somewhere in town.
But moved in second. Any discussion of the motion? Any motion? Alright, CNN will have the vote. Vicki?
Yes.
Uh, Robbie?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Scott? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you all so much. We appreciate your time.
Go home and hit the books. So you can graduate.
You're welcome.
Alright, moving on. New business, seven point one. Entertainer motion to approve the following administrators for an additional contract year from July first, twenty twenty-two to June thirtieth. Twenty twenty-four? Yeah, the two-year period?
Yeah, it's an extension on the one.
So we're actually extending them from twenty twenty-three.
Right, well, no, actually I think they're all, now that I say that, I think they're all up because we aligned it with the collective bargaining agreement. So it would be two years.
So, so it's not an additional contract year. We're going to. Extend the contract?
For two years.
Okay, so we'll change the motion then from credit to approve the following administrators for an extended contract. From July first, twenty twenty-two to June thirty, twenty twenty-four. Those are Marco Aliberki, principal Oak Hill High School, Samantha Garrett. Those are Marco Aliberki, Principal Oakville High School, Samantha Garrett, SASS Assistant Principal, Oakville High School, Melissa Gagnon, Guidance Director, Oakville High School, James Palmer, Adult Ed Athletic Director, Benjamin Wilson, Principal, Oakville Middle School. Jamie, uh, you know, Principal Perry Ricker, Libby Tozer School, Norma Jean. I forgot my last name, Adet, Technology Coordinator. I can have the motion, please.
Sommo second.
Moving seconded, any discussion?
So I will just add, I think if you remember a while ago, Norma Jean was on retirement list. Norma Jean came to me about three weeks ago, maybe, was it, and said, you know what, I'm not sure I'm ready to retire. And so I said, well, that's fantastic. She asked if she could rescind her letter of retirement, and I said, absolutely. So that was a, that was a no-brainer for me. You know, I think, I think you all know, these guys do a ton of work. They just do, do is really important, so. But they told the kid, let's do more.
Abstained the last couple, but there's no changes, this is just an extension, what we had before. With guarantees as far as what he mean.
This is just extending what we have previously, there's no changes from what we have previously.
We have an article later at the end about the contract, they have a collective bargaining contract agreement. This is to extend the contract, but the collective bargaining agreement will be, is what will apply.
I understand.
Okay. Any other questions? CNN, I'll call for the vote. Bob?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Robbie?
Yes.
Christie?
Yeah.
And Vicky?
Yes.
And Sumo? All right, seven point two. Entertainment a motion to approve the following central office administrators for an additional contract year from July first.
Same thing. It's a two-year.
Okay, so to extend the contracts from July first, twenty twenty-two to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Kathy Martin, Director of Curriculum Assessment and Instruction, and Nancy Dwyer, Special Ed Director.
Sommo second.
Moved in second, any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing that, I'll call for the vote. Vicky?
Yes.
Yes.
Robbie?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Yes. Bob?
Yes. Uh, yes.
Thank you very much. Seven point three. We can't motion to approve the following administrator for a contract, it's, this is a one-year, okay, for a one-year contract from July first, twenty twenty-two to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Dustin Miles, Assistant Principal, Perry Richter, Libby Tozer School.
Sommo second.
Moved in second, any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing that, I'll call for the vote. Scott?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Robbie?
Yes.
Christie?
Yes.
And Vicky?
Yes.
Harris, thank you. All right. Seven point four, approve the following policy, E F C. Price food services.
Sommo second.
Moved in seconded, any discussion? The one the one item that I was concerned about is in one through the, at the end of the fourth paragraph, it says, no student is to be denied food as a disciplinary measure. That should really be a no-brainer, but I would hope that no student denied the lunch because they don't have the funds on their account right then, and we're not sure, you know, that it hasn't been worked out that they're gonna come in, so a kid goes through that lunch line, a student goes through the lunch line, they should get a lunch, and then we worry about it later? Just, you know.
Bob, if I may, all lunch is free at this point, to stay long. So any, any kid who wants to eat lunch can, for free.
Okay.
So there's no money involved.
And that's great, except this policy specifically addresses how we recruit costs and things like that.
Well, we, this is a required policy, so we have to have it on.
I'm not saying it's not required, I'm just wanna make sure that if we're, that a student goes through the line, when they're not free by mandate, that they're gonna get their lunch, and then we'll worry about maybe collecting later, hopefully we'll collect, some of it we know we won't. You know, it's part of why we stick a hundred, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in the school lunch program every year, as part of the budget, for years and years and years and years, to keep it afloat. Diane, you have a puzzle book.
I do. I currently work, I sub in Lewiston because I can't sub here now. But the kids, the older kids that are in sixth grade, fifth and sixth, they bring extra money to buy an extra piece of pizza or an extra sandwich because they're still hungry. Do we allow kids to do that here? Are they allowed to do that?
We also have Alacard.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, just making sure. Even at the lower level, I've never seen.
We don't, we don't have Alacard at the lower level, but we, we don't turn kids away, so. And, and again, like, for instance, you know, a free meal, you know, there's a meal, the way, the way food service works is reimbursable meal has to have certain things. One of the things that we've done is, you know, kid wants a milk, we give them the milk. That's the reality, because the other option is they take an entire meal and we have, they've like throw it away, doesn't productive for anyone, so they're, they're able to do those things, they don't get anything.
Yeah, so the younger ones, if we made so many chicken nuggets because of kids have ordered that and cooked them and whatever we have leftover, we'll put out and then kids can come back for seconds.
Okay, so I don't I don't have an amendment written out on that, I just wanna make sure that we either encapsulate it into this policy for the second reading or it's quite clear that the board's policy is that no child gets turned away. And gets denied a lunch or a breakfast, if we're offering a breakfast. Okay, are there any other comments on the policy?
It almost touches on that previous paragraph.
It does in a way, yeah, it's close, it comes close.
It's really close, where it says no, you know, no child should be
Yeah, if they believe to be improperly nourished.
Should, should be denied for lunch.
Yeah, so, you know, that's kind of like if the teacher thinks they're improperly nourished, they're not gonna get turned away. And I don't want it to have to be left to the teacher.
No, and, and we haven't, I mean, you know, historically, even when we were charging, I mean, I, I'll be quite candid, we had students run up significant levels of bills, we've got, because if they're hungry, they're hungry.
All right. Any other discussion? And then I'll call for the vote. Scott?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Robbie?
Yes.
Christie?
Yeah.
Yes.
And Harris, thank you. All right, to approve the first reading of the following policy, E F D eight, restrictions on sale of food.
Sommo second.
Moved in seconded, discussion? Any discussion?
Are there vending, are there like vending machines at the high school?
We have, we have, well, we have a high school market, we get to, we have water.
Three vending machines there currently, then water.
Yeah.
Water only?
Yeah.
Yeah, right now.
Yeah.
Said the same in the staff, which is a little bit different.
Staffs excluded.
I know, yeah, but we actually don't have any more than that.
Yep.
I know, we used to meet in the staff break room. Years and years ago, occasionally, I think it was the boosters I was on at the time, I'm sorry.
At least have soda, she didn't there way back.
Yeah, I know, it took my money off and didn't give me much soda. Is there any, just any other discussion?
Well, I just I saw your puzzle book. The whole reason why is you can't have stuff that competes with the school lunch program during the day, that's all.
Yeah, so, so like if we had a vending machine with good food, we'd have to shut it off during the day, turn it back on in the afternoon.
So how does Alacard work?
What's that? Alacard, you can have because it's a part of your school lunch program. It, I know, it's bizarre.
It's not competing, it's money.
Because the vending machines are independently owned by a different company?
Depends, it could be, so we have to remember too, school lunch is an enterprise account, so it exists outside the regular budget to some degree, so it funds itself, so the way the national school lunch program works is they can sell whatever they need to, to fund the program, as long as we do reimbursable meals. Even if, say, the vending machine is outside, even if that money is going to the district, it's not going to the enterprise account, we can't do it. I, I know, it's, it boggles my mind.
But you can't guarantee the nutritional value, so when we're doing Alacard, it fits our criteria to even, um, the meal department.
The options are there, if they don't take the right balance, they don't take the right balance.
It's, it's, yeah.
Other discussion? CNN, call for the vote. Let's see. Vicky?
Yes.
Christie? Robbie?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
All right, seven point six, approve the first reading of the following policy, E F E, competitive food sales. Sales of foods in competition with the school food service program.
Sommo second.
Moved in seconded, discussion? Any discussion? Hearing that, I'll call for the vote. Scott?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Robbie?
Yes.
Christie?
Yeah.
And Vicky?
Yes.
Harris? Thank you. Seven point eight, to elect Michelle Burns as the school-based clinician at Oakville High School for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year, as recommended by the superintendent of schools.
Sommo second.
Moved in seconded, discussion? Discussion? Believe, I believe Michelle is here tonight. Hi, Michelle.
Hi.
It's an almost welcome, it probably will be in a few seconds. If not, I'll call for the vote.
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Robbie?
Yes.
Christie?
Yes.
And Vicky?
Yes.
Motion carries, or it isn't? Now it isn't, congratulations. Megan Murphy here?
No.
Megan's not, okay, so you're on the spot. I like to ask new employees who come to the board, is, is what brought you to R S U four? Just for information to board on what we might be doing right.
I've been, I needed a career to, or employment change, so I've been watching serving schools probably for the past year or so, and this one popped up and worked with me drastically. I reached out to colleagues that knew a little bit about R S U four and everybody spoke very highly, so I went for it and here I am.
All right, well, thank you and welcome.
And, and I will say, you know, Marco and I met with Michelle, and I was pretty impressed with the way she thinks outside the box and what she thinks. It's just, it's gonna be a nice fit.
All right, seven point nine, to elect Megan Murphy as the French teacher at Oakville High School for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year, as recommended by the superintendent of schools.
Sommo second.
Moved in seconded, discussion? Discussion? She doesn't buy a chance to speak Spanish, too, doesn't she? All right. Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. Vicky?
Yes.
Yes.
Robbie?
Yes.
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Scott? All right, seven ten, to elect Amy Saint Pierre as the Assistant Principal at Oakville Middle School, Sabathis Primary School for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year, as recommended by the superintendent of the schools.
Sommo second.
Moved in seconded, discussion?
So I was on interview committee, and I'm so excited for Amy and the energy she's going to bring to S P S and the middle school, I'm just gonna be in awesome, awesome fit.
Thank you, that's good to hear. Any other comments? So you probably know what's coming in a few seconds. Hearing no other comments, and I'll call for the vote. Scott?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes, so welcome back.
Robbie?
Yes.
Christie?
Yes.
And Vicky?
Yes.
Harris, congratulations. Can I ask you a question, or are you gonna? Megan, you brought you to R S U.
For the years, I have had the opportunity to work with seven staff members in R S U four. And I'm very impressed by the progressive work that happens in this district. And I feel that my skills, my training will be a great fit for the great things that are happening in this district, so I'm really excited to join the team.
All right, thank you, we're glad to have you, sounds like it's an excellent choice on our behalf. And I hope it works out as an excellent choice on his behalf as well. All right. This time, we get into really enjoyable things. Discussion of the fiscal year twenty-three school budget.
Does this come with a drink?
Yeah. Does it come with a drink?
Does it come with a drink?
Later. But yeah, I think that may be where we're at. All right, so, welcome to budget season. So you know, I, I'm gonna preface this with, I, I've kind of been saying all along, that this isn't gonna be pretty. It's not, if I'm being honest, it's just not. You know, we've done a really good job here, this board, our administrators, they've done a really good job here for the last six or seven years, really holding more. You know, unfortunately, as I said before, some chickens have come home to roost. As you know, across the world, costs of everything are up. And are up substantially, whether that's labor, whether that's supplies, whether that's heating fuel and diesel fuel and things like that. So, you know, unfortunately, you know, we're looking at something rather large. And I, I just, unfortunately, there was no way around it, we spent a ton of time. I gotta say, you know, I thank Jess, Jess, Jess really dug into this budget process, she, she stepped in right, right when the frying pan was maybe turning into the fire, and she's done a fabulous job helping me go through this. She really has, you know, I will say Scott has helped us a little bit, we brought him in to kind of take a look at some things, which has been very helpful. But I will take you through where we're at. You know, we've moved around. You can see it, I'll tilt the screen this way a little. You know, I might be able to drop it a little bit.
All right. All right, so there we go. Twenty-two, twenty-three budget.
Mission statement, and, and just so you know, this is the budget presentation I put out on the, on the website as well. I think it's a, it's worked well for us the last couple of years. We will need to do a district budget meeting this year, we've done one for the last two years, but we will need to do one, so that will come in the future. So I, I start this with, started this a couple of years ago, looking at valuations, you know, as, as you know, valuation plays a huge role in EPS, Essential Programs and Services Funding Formula. Basically, it has a huge role in the required local share. So the valuation of the town kind of dictates what the, what we have to raise locally to get the state funding. So if you look, I mean, and I think this is across the state, but I think it's, it's interesting here. In our three towns, they're up twenty-five percent or more in the last seven years, over the last seven years, and in this year alone, you know, almost four percent, almost five percent, and over five percent. I, I just don't know, I mean, Sharon and I have talked about valuations, that they, they are what they are, the state puts these numbers out, we have to live with them. You know, for instance, Witchfield's valuation this year is higher than which, which boggled my mind at some point, just looking at the, where that was, Gardner's valuation was around four hundred and eleven in the last one. It just, it was surprising to me, just how much they climbed, we looked at it this year, I mean, last year, it's, it's even worse this year. So just something to keep in mind as, as we look at EPS. So just something to keep in mind as as we look at EPS. General Purpose Aid. So looking at the EPS state share, we did see an increase this year. I think I told you that. A little under five hundred thousand. And although the, it was interesting because the mill rate, the mill cap in EPS actually went significantly down, but because our valuations of the three towns were up so much, our actual required local share went up. Uh which, that doesn't happen very often. I I actually have never seen that um in in my six budgets. Um and even before that, where the mill cap, the mill cap goes down as much as it is, I think it went down to seven point one. And yet, we still saw an increase on the required local share. You know, there have been years where, if you see, if you look here through the required local share, we're having to pay more to get more. Um in some years, we paid more to get less. We're about a sixty three percent receiver right now in the state. So six years of expenditure budgets, I I started looking at this, thinking about where we were um in FY seventeen and and where we are in FY twenty two. Interesting to note, the extent expenditure budget is up four percent over the course of those six years. I I don't know that any other school district can say that. You know, we have done a really good job here. You know, our our budget has really held the line. And when you think about it, that's an under one percent per year average. And we've had years where we've been down. Uh we've had years where we've been up, but overall, um we've done a really good job. And and I hear about it. You know, when I go meet with town managers, I spend time in Wales. You know, we hear about the fact that we've done the best we can do with what we've had to work with. You know, we are, I say it all the time, we're a nineteen million, five hundred and fifty seven million dollar company that makes no money and we exist on the backs of uh you know, property taxpayer for the most part, in the state. So Bob, Bob said this before, whether you get it from the state or you get it locally, it's one pocket or the other. And that's, that's the reality. We've talked about that. It's nicer when it comes from the state, it costs us a little less. But impact to local taxes, as you can see, the last five years, we're down. Not many people can say that either. You know, we're down significantly. Wales is down the least. Wales is the one town that saw an increase last year and the other two towns did not. We've had that happen before in the past. Again, that really rests on valuations. When when the valuation goes up so high, uh so much at once, it's it's really difficult. So, you know, we, like I said, I keep hammering at home, we've done a good job over the last, last five or six years of really trying to keep things um down and impact the property taxpayer as little as we can. So, that being said, uh the proposed twenty two, twenty three operating budget. So, when we did the first draft, if you remember last year, I brought a first draft to you um that was pretty big. Um and we were able to dig through that, use some one-time funds to cover some costs. We actually cut seven hundred and seven thousand dollars out of last year's budget to get where we were. That, until the state came through with more money, that was still going to represent an increase in towns. The state came through with more money and that helped significantly. However, we're looking at a budget draft right now that's up nine percent or one point nine one five million dollars. And if you, if you watch the news, um that's that's happening everywhere. I had a conversation with another superintendent this morning. Um they're looking at about a two, two and a half million dollar increase in a, in a district not much smaller than, I mean, not much bigger than the There are reasons for that. Uh we can get into. So how did we get here? This is just kind of an overall look. Um increases or in the falling. So as you can see, the majority of our budget is salary and benefits. And we've talked about that before. We run about eighty percent or so salary and benefits. What we actually control in-house besides, you know, labor, we don't control labor costs, those are negotiated. And so, one point five million is is salary benefits. Uh bus fuel, thirty four thousand, uh heating fuel, a hundred and twenty five. I put asterisks on those, I'm gonna be candid. I don't know that that's enough. Um I really don't. That, and just, just what did we figure, fifty seven percent? That's an increase of fifty seven percent over our cost now. You know, we we reached out a little before, I think at the last meeting, I told you, we were talking to companies, we were looking at three oh eight. We kind of held the line for a little bit. Well, now they're not giving us numbers. Because they, it's so volatile right at the moment. I don't know if you saw the news today, oil all of a sudden took a downturn this morning. I mean, it's still way up from where it was before, but it took a downturn, not sure why. Uh but it's incredibly volatile right in the moment. So I've I've reached out to three different companies to see where we can be. We do do a form of you know, collaborative buying um with the three towns, with diesel fuel and some heating fuel, so that does help. Uh the number of gallons that we use is pretty substantial, so we are an attractive customer. Uh but again, it all depends on what you can buy. So instructional supplies, this includes technology costs, are up about fifty five thousand. Maintenance costs are up a hundred and sixty five thousand. There are reasons for that. And like I said, I just don't know that the fuel costs are enough. It's such a gamble right now. As you all know, this is a living document. Come, we could come next, you know, next meeting and I've made substantial changes. But, you know, this is right now. So what's impacting the bottom line? Obviously, as we know, the cost of doing business is up across the board. You know, and I I like to highlight this, Norm Jean and I were talking about this the other day. One of the instructional technology programs that we use and and we need to, due to ESER requirements, uh went from four dollars per student to twelve dollars per student for next year. It's just, it's it's unbelievable, the increase in costs. Certainly, we've got rising costs across the board for fuel, heating, electricity, telephone, maintenance, supplies, I mean, everything is up. And I think one thing to remember, when salaries go up, it's not just salaries that go up. If I go Medicare, your main purse, those all go up. And and you may think those are tiny little numbers. They are individually, but when you talk about an organization that has two hundred and fifty plus employees, it doesn't take much um to make those numbers go up quickly. So there are some new things in this budget that I put in that I think we need. And I and I don't think this is enough. I I would like to see a half-time secretarial position for the uh director of operations. The level of, and and Robbie and I have had this conversation, but, and I think it needs to be full-time, but, you know, given where the budget was at, the the number of things that that position has to submit to the state, the paperwork, the mileage reports. I mean, it is keeping track of, you know, when we've had equipment, equipment inspections and elevator inspections and bus inspections. All those kind of things. It it is a daunting task. It's a, it's a big job. John's up to it, but uh he, that's, it's gonna be new for him. And then, as you know, Glenn, Glenn ran around here for six or seven years uh all the time. I mean, he was constantly on the go. You know, we don't, we don't want to burn people out, and he helped. And educational technician three for gifted and talented. I'll be quite candid, I, we way underserved our GT population, way underserved. You know, I, um, there's a slide at the end of things we didn't put in the budget. I'll be quite candid, I'd rather have a full, another full-time GT teacher. But looking where the budget was, we need to service more students. We need to provide them better programming. This is a start to that, but it's not, it's not ideal, but it's, it's a start. Kitchen floor at the high school is is now needs to be replaced. Um we had a food, we had an audit, a kitchen audit, and we got dinged for the floor at the high school. We do not have a choice. We are going to have to replace that. We're estimating that to be around twenty thousand dollars, but you know, supplies are are pretty tough right now, so that's, that, that number fluctuates. The uh Oak Hill Middle School tractor, at at this point, is pushing to the point where it's beyond its usable life. You know, we've gotten it serviced. I drove it. As you know, I've been, you know, helping out in operations. I got in it and I went, I really don't, not sure I want anybody to ride on this. Um so we have had it serviced, but it is, it is at the point where it's almost, we're going to be at a place where it's not worth fixing. You know, it's a two thousand seven, I believe. And and it's, it's seen a lot of use. I mean, the volume of snow removal that we do is, is pretty big.
Yeah, I think that purchase went in the building.
Yep, yeah, it did. Um so, I mean, we have, and honestly, the tractor at, we have a smaller GT at Sabathis Primary that could use replacing, but looking at a long-term or short-term, short-term plans, there's no reason to to add the tractor at this point. You know, that, I got a quote this week, or last week for that, from Waterman's, um about thirty eight thousand. I put thirty thousand in the budget uh because I think we can absorb some of that cost with our current budget, looking at year-over-year expenditures. But, you know, depends. Things are going up and not going down at this point. So uh the boiler for the steamer at the middle school, so in our kitchens, we have uh these big unit, steamer units. This, about a month ago, Kathy, the boiler went and the steamer unit, and I thought, oh, that's not a big deal. We'll get that fixed until the quote came in and it was just about seventeen thousand dollars. I almost fell over. That needs to be replaced. We need that. Um you know, we're, Sue right now is Robin Bieber to pay Paul. If I can get to the end of the year and are in a good place, I may do it before that and take it out of this budget, uh current budget, and we'll remove it from here. But right now, budget's frozen. I just don't, I don't dare. So, uh the antifreeze system. So we had a uh inspection on the high school. Um high school fire suppression system has an antifreeze component to it. Uh we are now using an outdated form of glycol or glycerin. Glycerin. Yeah, glycerin, I think it's glycerin. Um you know, and so we're going to need to replace that antifreeze system. We're looking at about seventeen thousand dollars for that, roughly. There are a couple of different options, but that was kind of mid-grade. Uh so, an ELL ed tech, um we have more ELL students than we ever had. How many are we at now, Kathy?
We have six.
Yep. Um and yeah, as I say, over the last few years, we've had one and now, now we're up to six students um that are English language learners. Um our current ELL coordinator is a classroom teacher. We stipend that person to oversee our LU plan, um do some testing, but we really could use another ed tech to service those students. Um I would like to start an employee appreciation program. Um we haven't done that before, but it's time. Um it really is. So I put five thousand dollars, and it seems kind of small at this point, but um in here, to start an employee appreciation program. We've got some great people and it would be really nice to honor them. Um there are increases in special ed. I mean, we've talked about this. We have to, we have to increase our special ed costs um or we face not needing maintenance of equity. So, you know, psych assessments, um we, we are seeing psychological assessments go through the week. I will say this, recently, um we had to have a psychological assessment done on a student. It was over three thousand dollars just for that one assessment. The number of referrals we have are through the roof. Some of this, I think Nancy and I were talking the other day, is post, post-pandemic. And maybe it'll level off, but with the number, our percentages of students identified in special ed have jumped. Our referrals are up, which means our triennials will be up, um and the cost to hire psychological examiners is going up. We have a rising number of students in out placements. Um we've got, had students move in recently that come with IATs, that have uh special purpose, purpose private schools on them. We've tried, you know, we try to get them in-house, but sometimes we just can't. That cost is going up, and so to try to combat that too, I put some, we put some money in the budget uh to increase our time with a board-certified behavior analyst. Um I I can't speak for the administrators, but I think that has been a very valuable service this year. Uh we need more of it. Um that's, that actually will potentially pay for itself in the future. Um you know, you save one student going to an out-of-district placement and that cost has saved us about between seventy and a hundred thousand dollars depending on the travel. So, um we do, you know, increasing instructional technology and supplies can cross the board. Things are more expensive. We need to upgrade the Oak Hill uh high school wireless network. That actually is gonna be an E-rate project. Um so federal government will pick up eighty percent if we pay twenty percent, but that is a new project. Norm Jean, what was that cost?
Uh the tool cost me forty nine seven.
Yeah, forty nine thousand. Yeah, but again, they pay eighty percent of that, so. But we have to pay some, and that's not in current budget. And then our property and casualty insurance, uh Jess and I met with Kai's Insurance. They're, they're putting our policies out to bid again. But projecting a ten percent increase, we, we currently spend about a hundred and twenty thousand roughly in property and casualty insurance, so. You know, all of those factors are here. Are there some new things? Yeah, there are some new things, but at the same token, they're just, the cost of doing business is up. So what does this mean? And this, this is the sticker shot, I'm being honest. You know, it would mean an increase to Litchfield of five hundred and forty thousand, increase to Sabathis of six hundred and twenty thousand over current um and increase in Wales to two hundred and thirty seven thousand. We've always shown this. I think it's a good statistic to show, a good number to show, the impact on a hundred thousand dollar home. And I know that most homes, or almost all homes now, are worth more than a hundred thousand. Valuation, again, valuations are up. But it's a pretty, it's a round number and easy to do. So in Litchfield, that would mean a hundred and twenty two dollars for the year or ten dollars and sixty two cents per month. Uh Sabathis, two hundred and eleven dollars and eighty five cents for the year of seventeen sixty five. Um or Wales, a hundred and ninety one dollars and fifteen cents, so it's fifteen ninety three. I mean, it's big. It just is. So things we didn't put in the budget. Uh you know, the parking lot at Oak Hill High School is bad. It's real bad. It's falling apart. You know, we kicked this down the road with a performance contract. We had a lot of conversation about it. It ended up getting removed from the performance contract. But it it's gonna need to be done at some point. And we got a quote this year, it's about two hundred and forty thousand to do. Anybody who drove into Central Office today, uh it's treacherous, and it's been, the last couple of years, it's just gotten, gotten worse and worse. A quote to do this parking lot of about forty thousand. You know, those things are not in here. I still think the director of operations needs a full-time secretary. Just to, you know, that would do, be a receptionist here as well, um but just the volume of work. Um currently, we have five nurses. They, one of those nursing positions out of ESER two funds. I think I can find some room in ARP uh to continue that for another year, but beyond that, I won't be able to. And and I'll be honest, given the state of the world and where we're at, every building needs a nurse. It it just us, and and they are more valuable. We have more, and it's not COVID-related. It's more, you know, the number of students we have that uh have a diabetes. We have students with feeding tubes. We have all sorts of things. And it's a big ask to ask someone to run back and forth between schools to do that, specifically since the population between Sabathis Primary and uh middle school are, is our biggest population. As I said before, we put a ed tech three in the budget. I I think we need a second teacher for gifted and talented. I really do. Again, way underserved that, our population in GT. You know, second shift custodial positions, uh both Libby Tozer and Sabathis Primary have one person on at night. I don't like it. Uh it makes me uncomfortable. Um safety-wise, we've done that for quite some time. You know, we do have head custodians, they typically work every day. We check in on them, cruise in the other buildings, check on them. But those are specifically Sabathis Primary, is a big building, to have one person cleaning at night. It's getting done, but it's not the way I would prefer it to be done, and and I never like someone working alone. I really don't. And then, you know, this, I bring this up, I think, every year. There, as we know, Libby Tozer and Sabathis Primary need a ton of work. Um and 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 when I say a ton of work, we need a ton of work to inhabit students, right? There's this big difference between inhabiting them for something else and for school. And and I put this on here because, you know, as we look at a construction project coming, we need to be cognizant of the fact and remind ourselves and everybody else that you know, if those who were on the board, I don't know, a couple of years ago, when we did the second phase, I think it looked like it was about eight million dollars between the two buildings that it needed for work. Think about what that is now. Uh that eight is probably more like sixteen. I mean, and I'm probably over exaggerating a bit, but it's a lot of money. You know, we, if you see on the wall over there, we're, we're working through the uh construction project. We need to get that done, um because I would tell you, if we don't do that, we are going to have to put money in those buildings. The boiler alone at Libby Tozer is gonna need to be done for long-term purposes because of the number of students we have in there. You know, ventilation, uh the roofs, those kind of things are all gonna need to be done. So I I could put that on there just so that we remember, you know, that project is gonna be expensive. Long-term, that's gonna save these communities significantly more money than dumping bill, money into buildings that are fifty-plus years old. You know, that we haven't done anything to, really. Uh if you think about it, both, neither, we made the conscious decision during both phases of the performance contract not to put a lot of money into those buildings, and we haven't. You know, Casey Point just did a a LED lighting project. They did it in three buildings. Cary Record for middle school, my high school, and not Libby Tozer and uh and Sabathis Primary. Again, those lights in there are, I don't even think they're T eights at this And Sabathis Primary, again, those lights in there are, I don't even think they're T eights at this point, uh, I think they're the older version. Of, of that, I mean, they are like, the bills are, are high, most of them, so, you know, I, again. I could put all sorts of things in there to work on those buildings, at the end of the day, it's really about remembering that they need work. So. That is where we're at right now. Um, questions, comments, process, where do we want to go from here?
What is the timeline again, like what's the anticipated? Um, date that we're looking at that we have a vote on yet as, as communities.
June fourteenth, yes, June fourteenth, yeah, June fourteenth would be the referendum, so we need to have the, uh, we'd have a district budget meeting. And, and we've done, kind of shift when we had the last district budget meeting, we gave quite a bit of time. In between, um, the district budget meeting and the referendum, and that was a Bob suggestion. Just if, if something happens with the district budget meeting, we haven't had it yet, but we're. Or we need to make sure we have our ducks in a row, um, when it goes to referendum, so people are really clear what that is. But we do need to go back to that process this year.
Yeah, we used to give ourselves not enough time to come back and look and see what we were going to be able to remove, but especially get input. You know, so by going as far out as we can, should the budget be modify the budget. We'll have an opportunity to make a more informed decision on what item it is we're going to remove our items. Uh, and get that word out, uh, hopefully maybe get some input from the community on. Here's some choices, you know, uh, we oftentimes used to do that if you were to cut a hundred thousand, this is. What we think would be eliminated, if you cut, you know, two hundred, then we're gonna make it so they have an idea. Really what those cost cuts were going to impact. We haven't gone to that exercise, I don't think lately, because we really don't know for sure. We're gonna ask for what we believe we need and no more. And our auditors are told us that we've been done. And hopefully the community will support it, if not, and they change it. Uh, then we'll have to make modifications and that will mean more meetings. Probably not just one or two between the budget meeting and referendum, but we'll have to come up with what the changes are that we're gonna make. That, that will be approved at the referendum, so.
I think you guys know, you know, this is my sixth budget, I believe, I've never brought you something like this. Um, and, and it's paid me, I mean, the administrators can tell you, Kathy and Jess can tell you, this, this has been really difficult for me. Uh, I tend to be pretty fiscally conservative, and this one's been hard, uh, but there just are no choices.
So, we've done it multiple ways in the past. Looking into budget, we've gone line by line. Down through each of the cost centers. We have gone to each cost center and looked at significant changes. We just kind of looked at those. To kind of see what has changed, up or down, uh, to trying to discuss that, figuring that those things have stayed the same. You know, this, this, it's probably if it was good last year, that's all I'm looking for basically, right around that, it's probably a, a valid request. But never done a zero-based budget, and in this budget here, we on the board do not have. Necessary knowledge, I think, and still to do a zero-based budget, where we would start with a clean slate. And look at everyone and we would decide how many dollars we're going to stick into each area, that would take us a long time. Uh, we have also in the past, uh. Totally administration, what our top dollar amount was. And then let them come back with a, with a budget that meets that, and then let us know what they took out of it in order to get there. So, we've done it multiple ways over my twenty-five years on the board. But it, it's always been kind of a board decision on what they wanted to look at, you know, how, how do you want to look at this budget? So that we all feel confident that. When it goes to the budget meeting, when we talk to the residents of our town that we represent. That we can make the best case for justifying why we're asking for what we're asking for. But the bottom line, it comes down to that, you know, we should feel confident that we are. Providing a budget that's gonna provide the best education. That the taxpayers can afford. No more. And no less, but what is that, you know, how do we, how are we gonna use those dollars that we're going to ask the community for? In order to provide the education, so ideas, suggestions on how we want to go about this? I mean, seems like we got a long time, but it will really fly.
And we can add these, we can add some, some budget workshop meetings if we need to.
I just have a thought, and I would encourage everybody to speak for themselves, but knowing that we have three. New members to this process, it feels like we should probably go line. By line so that there can be questions asked and an explanation for each one, so that everybody understands what. Each cost center is and the lines within the cost centers, I think that would be the best. Um, use of our time and an overall comprehensive understanding so that when we have to speak to. Um, everybody that we're able to best, um, offer explanations. And answer any questions to our best ability.
All right, and, and you mentioned the three who would, uh. Most of us have noticed that Dory hasn't been present for a number of meetings, she has some commitments taking care of her parent. And she's out of the area, she notified the superintendent today that she's going to. Resign her seat to allow Litchfield to have another representative on the board, that's here, they could probably. As much as she likes doing the job on the board, but would be more intact with the residents of town, so that will be the town. Based upon their charter, if they have one or whatever they have, they don't have a charter, so, so the town will decide. So it's a short term, so if I'm. He's either gonna wanna run or. So, there'll be another one that hasn't been through the process probably. Um, that, you know, represents a significant part of our total community. Actually, I mean, line by line by cost centers, not bad, uh, we also have to know that sometimes things pass over cost centers. And it's kind of difficult to follow them, but we do the best to try and sort through those as we go along. Any different suggestions?
Well, I, I think it's a good idea. So it's important that you see those things, one, one thing to note too, uh, in this budget, I did ten percent for health insurance. Um, I, I don't think it'll be that high, but right now I just don't know, we should know. I would recommend if we are gonna go line by line, we scheduled them, we scheduled some workshops to do that. What do you want to call them, special meetings? We talked about this.
I like to call them special meetings, and I could be right up front with everybody, and why I do that. Is we get a stipend of twenty-five dollars per meeting, we've never been paid stipenduses for workshops or training sessions or anything else. I think that if we give up a night of our week, twenty-five dollars isn't too much to go get reimbursed for that. Along with the travel and everything else, and so by calling it a meeting, it conforms to. The, the, the written expression of reimbursement for the stipends. Versus giving those because we could be having, we could be meeting every week during this budget season for a while. And that's, you know, that's a time and commitment that we didn't really sign up for, so that's my preference to call a meeting, I changed those a year or two ago for that. Purpose. So they become meetings with a sole purpose, it's kind of a special meeting. That's called for budget presentation, budget discussion, so we don't take up other business. It's like calling a special meeting for some other purpose. So unless people have. A real problem with that, then that's what we'll do, is we will schedule some special meetings for budget. Discussion, to work on those, there will also be time usually at most regular meetings. To maybe provide, depend upon what's on the agenda, short updates on where we are. Especially for the public who's used to seeing us twice a month and not every week. And also to make changes then too, so, you know, the idea is to get as much of the discussion done and look. As early as we can so that we can really start the work of. Doing any tweaking that needs to be done and be prepared for the budget meeting.
Also gives us an opportunity too to see what happens in Augusta, um, you know, the governor's presented a supplemental budget. I, I don't know, there's a law to talk about that, I don't know what it's gonna look like, but to hear some more money in there that could come our way.
So when would you like to start? Purposely kept usually over many years, Wednesdays open except for the first Wednesday of the month, I had a meeting, but it doesn't have to be my schedule. And I don't have to leave the meeting.
I haven't scheduled it yet.
Given it's a gubernatorial year, don't want to send absentee ballots out twice.
Yep, that would be nice, so yes, it'll be before.
So. Are there any objections to starting, are you ready to start next week? Any objections to starting next week? Meet here, Wednesday, six-thirty work. Okay, so we'll publish a special meeting for budget talks. Next for next Wednesday, we'll have our. Um, if there's two weeks between, sometimes there's two weeks or three weeks between meetings at the end of the month, I'm not sure what it is this month.
Coming up as we break, but again, you may have to meet, you know, some reality.
There ends up, because March is extra long. Ends up being two weeks in between the next meeting, so the next meeting scheduled is April thirteenth after the twenty-third. So maybe like the first to sixth, first week of April, because I know you're away, I'm coming back the fifth, okay.
Okay, so let's take it, yeah, week by week, see where we are, all right? We have that opportunity, that will be plenty of advanced notice to meet all the criteria. To publish in the, you know, special meeting agenda, okay? So with that being said, think about it, think about the numbers.
There'll be a lot more to think about when we see what's actually in there and what each line looks like. I'm going to, yeah, I, I'm definitely gonna send you a draft.
Another thing, please, these will be drafts. They are under discussion, in the past, some drafts have got out as if they were the gospel. And that was a done deal early in the process, and caused a lot of misinformation in the community. A lot of people got really upset at really big numbers and we hadn't even taken a look at it, so if you should share it with anybody, it's probably gonna be out online. It'll be marked draft, just make sure people understand that, it's still a working document. We will update them after every change and have a new draft, we'll date them. All right, so we want to make sure that when we come to our meetings and we're always looking at the latest draft. So we don't go back and revisit any things too often. Okay? All right, so we will schedule a special meeting for next Wednesday. All right, moving on, uh, seven thirteen, discussion of administrative structure.
So this was, uh, Christie had asked for an agenda item, uh, so it's been on here, so I will.
Yeah, so I have been kind of watching, just as a parent that has kids. At S P S and at Cary Booker, and thinking about kind of our administrative structure and just wondering. Does it make sense, does it make sense to have a principal and a vice principal that is. Going back and forth from building to building, particularly thinking about the middle school and not having a child there yet. But hearing kind of a lot of. Questions or concerns that that school has the most students, we talked to the board and hired a, um. G M C, thank you, um, to kind of help with that, but I would love to just kind of have a conversation. At the board level to kind of talk about, does our current structure make sense, is it best supporting? Our students, is it best supporting our administrators, because it feels like on the outside looking in, they're such really thin. Um, and I wonder if there's a better way, that's why I have to.
Did you have an op, uh, a. An option or an alternative, just kind of a suggestion throughout?
Yeah, I'd like to have a question first, I mean, I have ideas in my head, but I'm not sure, I haven't asked the party better, like. It's just as an observation as a board member and as a parent and thinking about what I'm hearing from other parents, like, does that current structure make sense?
Right, and, and so, sure you're aware of why we went to the structure we did. Only gonna have three schools?
Or only have three schools, however, that seems like it's not gonna happen overnight. Um, I wonder if those administrative changes would kind of maybe make, like, we could have. That the amount of. Pressure on educators would be at the level it is now, um, and I don't see that getting better. So yeah, I just wonder, and things like, also, looking at the budget, seeing the numbers are high. We're gonna go to the taxpayers to ask for a pretty big ask for an addition or an addition and to close down schools. I hope it happens, but just to kind of be proactive to think about that, so I'd like to have a conversation at the board level on that.
All right. Simon?
I agree, because the advocate at Oak Hill Middle, and, um. I've had times where I've had to email Principal Wilson with some different issues and things, and it seems like it's taken him a lot in the back. Which is fine, I just, I think he's overwhelmed. Um, I think he's doing a fantastic job of putting that up, but I just feel he's overwhelmed, that's a lot, you know, if that middle school has got more students. The increase in behavioral issues, the issues this year and the masking situation, hopefully maybe some of this will normalize now, but. I, I may have some, I've had some conversations with teachers and stuff, and I just, I think that it'd be more beneficial to have. A single principal there all the time, so he can focus everything in one location. And then we added, we added additional grade there too, so, you know, fifth grade wasn't there before, so now you, you're, you're adding to. That plate of that one particular school. Personally, I'd like to see, uh, somebody in charge of each school, S P S and Oak Hill Middle.
So you like a principal?
Principal at each one.
Or dedicated administrator at each one.
Yeah, you know, maybe the assistant can run back and forth, but I really feel like. One head of management there, so.
I feel like this. This year in particular has been. Very trying, um, for a lot of reasons for the administration, but. In specifically looking at the middle school and the primary school situation. I think knowing that we have hired somebody to, um, be in the assistant principal role. And we've also made the proactive approach of having a dean of students. Part of me says I don't, we haven't had ideal conditions to allow the changes that we had made initially of. The restructure process to really let that settle and sink in, like, this is. This is like worse than trying to build the plane while you're flying it this year for everybody. And I feel like we need to allow the measures that we have made at this point in terms of whom we have hired now. And allowing the dean, um, to really work into the system, I think. Um, Mike Jack has been doing a really good job with that, um, see how this. Um, plays out for the rest of the year before we. Um, do any sort of knee-jerk reactions and thinking that we need to make changes, I just don't feel. I feel like there's too many parts and pieces, and if we try to, um, make adjustments with too many things, we're not gonna know what actually works. And that's not to minimize the concerns and the changes that have gone on, because change is hard and it's a lot going on at once. But I also feel like now, we can start to have the dust settle a little bit and maybe have, see how it. We can start to have the dust settle a little bit and maybe have, see how it is, um, for a period. Before we entertain the thought of now we've got to, to add more. Um, we don't know, you know, what's going to happen. We just hired somebody who is very energized and is present. And I think we need to let that soak, um, for a little bit, if that makes sense. That's my thought.
I, you know, and I will say this, you know, we, we haven't had the, we have an administrative team meeting either. We, we have not had the opportunity to talk about this as a team, uh, what that looks like, what the thoughts, uh, of the administrators are. At the end of the day. Jamie, Dustin, Ben are the ones living this. Um, and so I, I, I would hate to see us here make rash decisions. I, I think it's, I think it's a great conversation. You know, Christie and I talked about this briefly. Kathy and I have talked about this. I mean, Ben and I have talked about it. We, we, we've had this conversation, but not as a whole team. I'd like to have that first, um, because I think at the end of the day, it's very easy for us to sit here. And kick this around and say, well, uh, from the outside looking in, this is what we need to do. Um, we're not the ones living it. Um, and I think, I think ultimately we have to, we've got great people. I mean, that, these, these folks out here are unbelievable. Uh, the things they do every day are just unbelievable. And so I trust them, you know, when they, when they tell me that, yeah, I don't, I don't think we need to do this. I think we've hired the right fit here. I think we've got good things going, which. When they tell me that, I believe that because they're good. Uh, they know what they're doing. And so. I, I want to have that conversation with them before, and, and it's not because, you know, I, I don't think they're concerned. There are always concerns. We're all, we're always going to be working through concerns. Everybody's got ideas. Um, at the end of the day, we need to really talk to those that with it. We need, we need to have that conversation as an administrative team. I think it's good conversation. Um, you know, we want our, the best for our students. Um, and it, it may be finding right personalities. They have done that. Um, and so I just think, think, let us have that conversation.
Well, this is just a discussion item anyway.
Right.
No, I know.
So it, you know, it allows the board members who are seeing something and they thought maybe we need to revisit at some point. Share those thoughts and at some point in the future. It may be the opportunity to go and suggest those changes. Obviously, if the voters don't support the new construction. We'll have to reassess things then. Decide how many. Millions of dollars are going to come up to upgrade those schools. At that time, we're going to have to figure out how we're going to staff them and then what grades are we going to change the grade structure yet, you know? So, you know, there'll be different conversations for sure going forward based upon. How fast means things move along or don't move along. But I think, I agree, it's a good discussion to have is to bring it up and these know that there are some concerns and people are just kind of wondering if. You know, I kind of agree with, with Jen in that. It has been a unique year. We made the organizational change, not thinking we were going to be where we ended up. So, you know, we changed things and then the world changed around us and it made things a little bit different. A lot more stress on everybody. Maybe there'll be less phone calls. Um, that'll have to be responded to, a little bit less stress by the administrators and by staff and by students. That will, will help things out, new staff. I agree with Jen that for this year. We don't try and make any modifications. The A team can talk about how they can provide the best coverage between the schools and maybe. I don't know, focus one or the other's attention more so on one school than the other, if that's possible. I don't know how they work together as a team and how they split those duties between the two schools apart. So, you know. Yes, you may.
I, you know, I tend to agree with you Scott because it is difficult when, I know when I was at Cary Ricker. If there isn't a principal there because she's at the other building or this building, it's hard. I don't have anybody to go to have to call and that takes time. So. I know that's difficult. It isn't an ideal situation for any principal or assistant principal to have to go from one school to the next. And there's not always an administrator there in the building. You know, what if they're sick and they're, one's going here and one's going there. So it is tough.
Yeah, you would have that, I mean, there's lots of times you're not going to have an administrator in the building.
Yeah.
They're going to be at meetings, they're going to be training, they're going to be sick, you know, and we have to cover it best we can, but it's the day to day operations. So, yeah, you know, I'd have a principal, I. You know, I would hope the assistant principal would be available that could try and help with most things. So I don't know. I guess I'm not that familiar with how they split duties and responsibilities and how much the assistant principal can do with the principal functions. I think that oftentimes results from the personalities and the working relationship between the two. What the principal is willing to have the assistant principal do. Uh, hopefully they don't put too many. Holds on and allow them to function.
I just want to also make it clear this is not a criticism of the current structure. It was just an open location. I hope that. Conversations could be had because I think that there's a lot of possibility, particularly when you think of. How groups function and how they possess their, kind of, the kids in the situation. I just wanted to mention that too, like. I totally trust the decisions you're making with the A team, but I think it is worth exploring and I'm glad to hear that that discussion is happening.
Yeah, you know. We get it because we thought it would be a three schools and this would position us so that we would have the staff on hand. If we had, we had five principals and we only have three schools, then we gotta get rid of two principals. And then we'd have a principal with no assistant principal in the schools for them. So. You know, it's kind of, we're hoping that we're making a plan. We're not getting too far ahead of ourselves. But I think more discussion needs to be had. I think the discussion needs to be done with the administrative team. They're well aware of concerns that have been expressed by the board and. Hopefully they will evaluate their working relationship and how they're doing things. And come up with, uh, the best way to cover, cover the duties and we'll see how that works out. Any other discussion on this item? All right, at this time we move to committee reports. Financial facilities meets next time?
Yep, next time, Bob. And, and when we meet next time, we'll have a visit with the architects, so. Yep.
A personnel policy committee? Okay, CI technology committee?
We met and Norah Jean, uh, gave us the overall technology overview for this year for the entire district. And she's going to pass you out some wonderful reading material. Essentially to synthesize and summarize this quickly, um. She is staying on to help with the transition, um, into power school and because she's awesome. And she has a staff of five with her and she then began to spell out, um. Let me correct, but the fact that we don't have to have two individual plans, a tech plan and the overall vision plan, it's all one. Thank you. Yes, um, and, uh, looking at the devices that, um, each of the schools, the teachers and the students utilize. And shifting away from the Chromebooks, um, specifically to the MacBook Air. Well, actually the MacBook, um, iPads with the keyboard, like what Andy has there. Um, for high school and middle school. Cary Ricker getting that too, I can't remember.
So would be iPad through eight.
Okay. Okay, thank you. She gave us an awful lot of information in a short amount of time. Um. Yeah, I know. What's important to know about this is, um. There has been funding provided through CARES Act and COVID funding for, um, providing some of these devices. And whatever, the biggest thing, um, that. The takeaway of this is that MLTI, which was the start of all of these devices. Um, is actually going to stretch down to sixth grade as well. Which will be good, um, in kind of opening it up. We as a district, of course, have made the commitment to be one-on-one with students. Um, and not all districts have done that. So it's a matter of, um. You know, continuing to do that, the transition to upgrading the servers has been, um, highly beneficial for our students. Um, as well as having the hotspots that, um. The SR funds, yes, have paid for.
So we're using emergency connectivity funds?
Right. But anyway, you get the gist. Yep, yep. Um, so yeah, it was, uh, again, a lot of information, both sides and, um. If you have any questions, I would say direct them to Norah Jean.
Are there any questions? All right, hearing that. Board member comments? Board members, any comments?
Looks quite comprehensive. I suspect you have a.
It's a little overwhelming when you look at it at first. Well, I think too, when you look at something.
Oh wait, I already moved on. I'm on board member comments, not about the plan, but board member comments. So now we're under board member comments. All right, so does any board members have any comments?
I think, uh, the, the shift to, um, optional masking, I, I really hope that. We start to have a shift for everybody in a positive direction. Um, I know it's been hard and I know that this budget season is also going to be very tricky. So I hope that. We continue, as Bob said, to provide the best educational opportunity for our students in the district. Also understand the fiscal responsibility that it entails for every citizen and be mindful of that.
Any others? All right, I would like my comment to say I appreciate. Uh, especially I want to thank the public that attended in person or online tonight. It was, I was quite pleased with the outcome. We got. I think the business done. And everybody was respectful of everybody else and that's always a nice thing. So hopefully moving forward, we will continue to carry that mutual respect through everything that we do in our daily lives. And, uh, we carry on. Aside from that, um. I'm hoping that the board will be able to work out a good budget that we will be able to. Submit to the residents for their approval, both with the budget being and then at the referendum. Okay, that being said. The next order of business that we have is an executive session, which will be only board members. Uh, present. We will, we do plan on taking action after that, which will be an open session. So those out there listening are usually used to, we have executive session and no business subject to adjourn. But there is a, uh, business to go and approve the collective bargaining agreement that we're going to have discussions about in executive session. So if you want to see around and see if we approve it or not. You're more than welcome to do that. The only other thing they will do after the executive session will be to adjourn. Thank you all for attending. At this time, if you're online, we're going to turn you off except for the board meeting. Put you in the waiting room. We'll pull, pull you back when we're done. I have really no idea how long the executive session will last. So I can't give you a timeline, but when we are done, we'll open it back up and we'll bring everybody back here to the waiting room and announce it to the people who want to come into the room. So at this time, entertain a motion to enter into executive session, first at the one MRS A four oh six D. Negotiations with the RSU number four administrators association. Seconded, who seconded? Any discussion? If you know the question, I'll call for the vote.
Yes.
Uh, Christie?
Yeah.
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Bob?
Yeah.
Scott?
Yes.
All right, be in executive session at eight thirty-six. So a reminder to the board. Our nine o'clock. So if we go over nine on this, we'll have to have a motion to go into the next business item. Cause we can't take up anything new after nine without going to the board. Do the Jordan turn back on the live stream? Hey, Jerry, media livestream back on in the next thirty seconds.
No pressure though, oh my gosh.
Anybody can do it, Jordan.
All right, we are back in session. At this time, we entertain a motion. To approve the July one, twenty twenty-two, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five collective bargaining agreement between the RSU number four board directors and the RSU number four administrators association. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing that, I'll call for the vote.
We'll tell you Vicki had to sign off. She wasn't feeling well. Um, and so Christie?
Yeah.
Uh, Robbie? Yes. Diane?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Motion carries, uh, bargaining agreement is approved.
All right, thank you. All business being completed was on the agenda without objection. I will declare this meeting adjourned.
Thank you all.
Thank you, everybody.